To the flag of the nine states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
The week to the flag of the state of New Mexico is the symbol of perfect friendship among the United Nations.
Please bow your heads and pray with me. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you today to express our gratitude for all you provide and to seek your wisdom. We ask that you watch over our children as they head back to school this week. We ask that you grant us clarity and unity as we deliberate the issues before us today. May our words be filled with respect and understanding. Help us to listen and seek common ground whenever possible. We ask that you bless this meeting and that it may be fruitful and productive work. We ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
Good prayer.
Good morning, everybody. We'll go ahead and get started with any public comments and announcements.
Hey, guys. Thank you for inviting us to visit with you today. Just wanted to give you a quick update on the fair. It went really well. The support from you guys was very noticeable this year. We upgraded with all your help and Jason kind of jumped two hoops to make sure that we had trucks and personnel there. And Mr. Cage had a bunch of guys, which made a difference because we had a carnival for the first time in a few years and had a lot of people. We think we had about 25,000 visitors this year. 145 livestock exhibitors and about 500 animals, on top of all the other things like the indoor exhibits and flower shows and stuff like that. So it went really well. I think our sale right now, we're looking at 1,230-something thousand dollars, which is another 100,000 more than last year and quite a bit more than any other fair in the state. It far exceeds Albuquerque State Fair or Lee County's the next closest to us. And they usually fall somewhere in the 700,000, 800,000 dollar range. So it was a huge success. The upgrades you guys have done to the Horse Council side were very noticeable. And we started demoing the fairgrounds this week. So we started knocking down cattle barns, cattle wash racks, old bathrooms, things like that. And hopefully in September, we'll start rolling into the new side of construction, working through a few permitting, not issues, just getting to the finish line on all of our new construction permitting. Working with fire marshal and stuff like that, with our fire suppression tanks and things. So I just wanted to say thank you, guys. We appreciate it. Thanks for you guys that showed up. And we're hoping next year and the year after will be even bigger. We don't think the building will be done next year. Wade Construction out of Roswell is the general contractor. And we're looking at probably the year after that before we're ready to show them the new building. Then we'll tear down all of the old animal facilities. We appreciate you, guys, and we look forward to visiting with you some more here in the future and talking about the future of the fair. It really affects a lot of kids. I mean, most of this money goes back to these kids' schools and education. I speak from experience on that. A kid headed to call the station next week. So we appreciate all your help and yours. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Morning, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to say a few words this morning to you guys. My name's Rick Fuentes. I'm the mayor for the Village of Loving. And I just wanted to come and share some thank yous with the commission and Jason Burns. On behalf of the Village of Loving, I want to extend our deepest gratitude for your unwavering support and dedication. Your continued assistance with our grants, transfer station, and road maintenance has been invaluable to us. The impact of your support is truly evident in the improvements we've been able to make in our community. The grants have empowered us to undertake essential projects. The transfer station will make solid waste management more efficient. And the road maintenance, Cottonwood Street, Oak Street, and the village-wide micro-surfacing have significantly enhanced our road infrastructure. Thank you once again for your commitment and for making such a positive difference in our village. We are incredibly fortunate to have such supportive partners in Eddy County government. Thank you all very much.
Any other public comment?
Morning. Commissioner's, good morning. My name is Mary Garwood. As most of you know, I'm the city councillor and I also am the key Carlsbad beautiful director for the city of Carlsbad. Dual roles. I'm excited to see that you have the K- Lynda beautification grant on the agenda to vote on this morning. I think it's a great program. It's actually the beautification initiative that the governor announced earlier this year in her opening session. And it's actually replacing the Tossin' and Moss campaign. So that campaign is no more and it's being replaced with this one. It's great to see that the state is putting so much emphasis on beautification. And it's not just litter control. It's actually community murals, it's tree planting projects, landscaping. I'm excited to see Eddy County stepping up and applying for the funds. I'd be happy, as I have a whirlwind of titles, but I'm also on the New Mexico Clean and Beautiful Advisory Committee for the state. I've been doing that program for nine years now. I'm happy to work with Eddy County staff, expand on Riverblitz, and any community efforts that you guys might have. And where the city of Carlsbad is happy to partner in whatever we're able to do as well. So I just wanted to come and voice support. This is honestly a really exciting thing to be coming before you today. And I'm just excited you all are going to consider it and I urge you to pass it and let's see what good things we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Any others? Let's move into item two on the timed agenda, RFP 2408, Architectural and Engineering Services for the new Eddy County Detention Center. Ms. Tonia?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So for RFP 2408, the Architectural and Engineering Services for the new Detention Center was solicited on June 9th. We did, the county did receive five submissions. Four were determined to be responsive and meeting all mandatory specifications. Based on the evaluation, it is recommended, Studio Southwest Architects was the one who scored the highest and is the one that we are hoping to get awarded for today. Is there any questions for me? That's pretty much it on my end.
Where is Studio Southwest Architects out of?
Studio, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Albuquerque.
I don't have any other questions. Is anybody else? We'll look for a motion to approve RFP 24-08 and award it to Studio Southwest Architects.
So moved.
Okay.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll move into our trailing agenda. The first item we have is commission meeting minutes for July 2nd, 2024.
Any questions? Things for me to pull? We'll look for a motion to approve commission meeting minutes for July 2nd, 2024.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have commission meeting minutes for July 16th, 2024.
Any questions, concerns? Look for a motion to approve commission meeting minutes for July 16th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Commission meeting minutes for July 26th, 2024, special meeting.
Questions? I will look for another motion to approve commission meeting minutes for July 26th, 2024, the special meeting.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Owen? Next, expense approval report for July 2024.
Items we would like to pull. Questions? For a motion to approve expense approval report for July 2024.
I'll make the motion.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
And then we have purchase card approval report for June 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving to item two, we have AT&amp;T Mobility Cellular Tower Placement submitted by Solaris Group, presented by Mr. Moore Hutton.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I assume you've all had an opportunity to look at the applications that have been presented. This cell tower would be a 199-foot tower, standard-looking type tower. It's going to be at R 353 East Ash Rural Road, just east of Loving. The application was pretty complete and thorough and it was taken before the Planning and Development Board for approval and to act as a public hearing for the opportunity for anyone to give comments on it. There were no public comments at that time. And the Planning and Development Board did recommend the approval of the tower. Any questions?
With that, I'll look for a motion to approve AT&amp;T Mobility Cell Tower Placement.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
We have another one. Item three, Verizon Cellular Tower Placement submitted by State Tower, or I'm sorry, Sun State Towers.
Correct. It was the same process. The application was received and deemed complete. We took it before the same Planning and Development Board meeting back in July. And they also recommended that this one be approved. So any questions on this? It's located at 4,002 Wesley Street, out in Happy Valley. And this is going to be a monopole tower, which is sort of like a, sort of like an old-style radio antenna on a car. You know, a single pole with a sort of ball on top. And it's 150 feet tall, so it's not as tall as the other one. Any questions on this one?
I'll make a motion to approve Verizon Cellular Tower Placement.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Owen?
Upstaying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have our K-Lynda statewide beautification grant. Mr. McCroskey?
It looks same as the old one. Good morning, commissioners. Mr. Chairman. Mary did a pretty good job of laying the groundwork for this when she talked with you. Want to come before you, request your approval to apply for the K-Lynda statewide beautification grant. I'll hit a few highlights here. I made myself a few notes on it. But I did include their presentation in the packet for you all. It's a first-time offering from NMDOT on this with awards up to $200,000. It's a non-match grant, so we wouldn't have to put anything in the kitty towards this. They're hoping to award it to 15 to 20 entities if everything goes right for them. A few things on it, and I've discussed with Ms. Robert over this. They require a full-time person to be designated as the program coordinator. I think till we get a grand administrator in place, we can probably use one of the code enforcement positions that person. I have one individual there that already is working with the Southeast New Mexico Illegal Dumping Partnership. And I think that individual could probably take on the responsibilities of this and keep us moving forward along with my help. But we could designate them, that individual as the program coordinator. It's my understanding from speaking with Savannah, she's had contact as well with the state, that we don't actually have to have a program coordinator. We can designate somebody as that individual. So I think we've got that covered. Salaries can be paid out of this, although I don't think it was our intention to use any of the money for that. There are some strategies we have to accomplish through this, from leveraging student learning, where we can work with the high schools and other schools to spread anti-litter messages, litter abatement alternatives to fines. We can do some state corrections, contracting, have the state inmates and such do some litter cleanup if available. We can use local inmates, county inmates for cleanups if that's available and feasible. We can work through elementary anti-litter education programs, ads, coloring books, activities for the children to hopefully have the children help bring that back to the families and instill those thoughts and values and the anti-litter message back into the families and the rest of the community. We can have business corridor programs such as NMDOT's Adopt a Highway Program. We can start hopefully performing those activities on county roads and such. They require an illegal dumping hotline. Now, we've already got that set up. We're kind of ahead of the game and I think we could utilize it with the Southeast New Mexico Illegal Dumping Partnership. There is an 800 number for a hotline that operates out of the Rita facility in Lee County. We're already doing our best to help spread that message throughout Southeast New Mexico. Secure Loads Establishment and Enforcement Program. I believe we've made some of that in our early legal dumping ordinance already, so we can continue to enforce that. Weekend cleanup events, collection centers, offering neighboring, what do they call it? What am I trying to say? Sorry, I lost my train of thought. Kind of neighbor cleanup, where we reduce rates for communities that don't have the ability to offer cleanup programs. We can reduce the rates at facilities to allow those cleanups. We pretty much do that anyway. We allow dumping and disposal at our convenience stations on a regular basis in regular locations all the time anyway. So, you know, we've got a lot of these things already covered. And also to perform community events such as Riverblitz, we can work with Mary, expand these programs and a lot of education and informational programs out to the public as well. We do have to hold three events and two contracts in the program. I don't think there'll be any problems setting these type of things up. The contract can be with schools, with businesses for cleanups, civic groups, things like that. We do have an application deadline of August 15th, so, you know, I would ask for your approval on this so we can move it forward if you so desire. And I will stand for any questions I might be able to answer.
Well, this is of big interest to me. I think everybody knows that. We need to catch some people illegal dumping litter and get them to fund some judges. I'm looking at a sheriff now. If we're going to have the money in this to actually pay a salary to somebody for some of this, I would be in favor of hiring somebody, you know, rotating people in and out. I don't know what it takes, cameras up, somebody on top of a hill with a pair of binoculars. But if we could get a few people in front of some judges and get their name in Carlsbad Local or something like that, I think that would do more to help this situation than anything. Kern Argus has worked pretty well as well. You know, you do a police plotter on that, so it's a problem. You drive around out there in the county, the airport, you drive out there and pick up Walmart bags and the day after you do it, they're all back. I mean, if somebody could sit there and at least pull some people over, I mean, we need to. I will hope for this, but I think we really need to push this real hard all around the county.
Commissioner, just for clarification too, this grant will focus more on the education piece around the community. And like Mr. McCroskey said, at this time, we don't plan on using any of the funds for personnel costs because we don't want to incur that reoccurring cost. Also because this grant is new and we want to make sure, you know, we get into it and we know, you know, what the requirements are going to be. We can continue to do this for the future. And talking with Mr. McCroskey and even Savannah, you know, she's going to help with the advertising piece. We're fairly certain that we have the personnel right now to kind of get this grant up and off the ground first before we kind of get into hiring additional personnel for that, so.
I think the education is great, but part of that education needs to be some people have to go explain themselves in front of the judge and get their name in this.
I'll look for a motion to approve the K-Lynda statewide beautification grant.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
We will look this thing moving forward for you.
Next, we have a position reclassification on our sheriff's office, our SO Records Administrator to SO Crime Data Analyst. Sheriff Cage?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. This reclassification is based upon some changes that we've had. When we originally came in and got a new records clerk, an additional records clerk, that was back when we were handling a lot of the IPRAs out of our records division. Since we've transitioned over to having specialists handle our IPRAs and redactions, the workload has decreased dramatically. So we always try to be efficient with what we have at the sheriff's office, especially when it comes to personnel. So we started to look around and say, well, what can we use here? And I've been getting pinged on for a while, especially from Lieutenant Dugas, about a crime data analyst. And at first, I was hesitant because I was like, well, do we really need that? Well, we started looking at it and they made some presentations to me. And I'm convinced that it is something we need. The crime data analyst will be taking a look at, taking a deep dive actually, into all of our crimes that are committed. Especially we have oilfield theft is increasing, and that being crude oil. It's getting worse and worse and we're seeing more instances of it and they're becoming more sophisticated in how they're doing it. So all of these things put together, it's not just theft, but we want to look at everything, all crime. And having a data analyst will handle that, will be looking, and that will be their only job, is to go through and comb through all of this data. This will benefit us in many ways. First and foremost, it will benefit the citizens because we're going to be able to more effectively and proactively take a look at how we can intervene before crime happens. The second part is going to benefit y'all and the citizens in the fact that it's going to make it easier for us when we apply for grants because we can show, because we all know that what grants are data-driven, right? That they want to see results or they want to see a need, they want to see why you need that. So that's what we're looking at and that's where we're going with it. So I think this is going to, I'm a little old-school sometimes and that's why I was resistant to it at first. But data analysts are the, are new age. I mean, that's what agencies are using to, again, more effectively combat crime. So I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I'll look for a motion to approve the reclassification.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Next, we have sheriff's office covered parking budget adjustment request.
There we go. I'll just stay up to them. Back many years ago, when the sheriff's office was built, there was originally included, because we sit on the face of the sun out here, covered parking for our vehicles. And if you look at some of them, we've gone away from the white tops because they cook and they just turn, they turn brown. And it's very unattractive. And our employees who are at the office, they end up coming out to a car that's baking. When, you know, like our office, our girls in records and Veto in evidence. And it's just, it was originally supposed to be there. For whatever reason, the folks that were on the commission at that time decided that they wanted to save a little bit of money and did away with it, which I think was kind of short-sighted. I talked to, I talked to manager Roberta and we visited about it and she saw the need for it as well. And she had some money that, she said, I think I can support this with this pot of money. So that's what we're here for. We want to get this done. We want to get our vehicles protected. We've got special service vehicles. Our bear cats should be coming in sometime beginning of winter. We've got our MRAPs. We've got our, we have our Humvees that are sitting out there just baking in the sun all the time. So this is going to protect all of our expensive vehicles that we work so hard here in Eddy County to have. So that's what we're requesting is an adjustment to fund this.
We've talked about it a long time. I'm glad to see it.
I'm good with it.
Is it going to be big enough?
Yes, this is going to cover, we added a new parking area out there also. This will cover four different parking areas. It will cover everything.
I will look for a motion to approve the sheriff's office covered parking budget adjustment request.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Thank you, Robert, for helping with that.
Next, we have budget adjustment for the Sandpoint landfill cell six construction. Mr. Burns?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners. We're coming to you this morning asking for an adjustment of $750,000 for the cell six project. The way this came... The way this came about, just, just real quick, is, is we came to you last year in September and asked for $4 million to proceed with the construction of cell six. We, we proceeded with the procurement, we got a contractor onboard and awarded, and they commenced with construction in November and they, they moved along great. The way our fiscal year works, it is, whatever money you don't expend in the last fiscal year doesn't get carried over into the next, you take over your, your budget that you budgeted during our budget process. We intended to pay an invoice that was from June in the previous fiscal year and we kinda held it up a little bit due to some questions in excavation quantities that we were discussing with the contractor, and so we didn't get that paid by the deadline last fiscal year. So what we're asking for is to reauthorize that money in this fiscal year. We're not adding money to the, to the project budget, we're just asking for the funds essentially from last fiscal year to go into this fiscal year.
Questions?
I, I do it.
Questions?
No.
Look for a motion to approve fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget adjustment for the Sandpoint landfill cell six construction.
I'll make that motion.
I second it.
A motion in the second, please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Next, we have fire service for ConocoPhillips donation grant application notice, Chief Mac.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, so this is the annual donation that ConocoPhillips does. We have to put in a grant application. We always ask for $12,000, they're pretty generous and always donate that. So, we'll see the results this year, we're gonna put it towards medical procedure training aids. So we've been working to progress to make our training more realistic for the guys. So with this $12,000, we'll be able to continue to add to that. So it helps supplement, offset some of our costs to save less for later. Any questions?
Every week you're here with a new grant or donation from a...
I'm always trying to find one, so. Yeah.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move into our resolution and agreement consent agenda.
Any items that anybody would like to pull or discuss further?
I don't have any.
See none, then I'll look for a motion to approve the resolution and agreement consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in the second, please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Thank you. Travel request consent agenda.
Questions, anybody?
Not for me.
Then we will look to, look for a motion to approve the travel request consent agenda as presented.
So moved. Second.
A motion in the second, please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Thank you. We don't have any emergency business, legislative comments, announcements, updates. Special session, as you already all know, wasn't much to talk about, lasted a few hours. One bill was passed for $100 million to support the fires and redact all. So that pretty much wraps up the special session. The other thing is, New Mexico Counties has sent out their 2025 legislative priorities. They were set at, I believe, the August first board meeting. Sheriff Cage was in attendance for that. They just sent that out and I just wanted to share those priorities for this year. Most of it has to do around detention center and fire emergency. They're still gonna be supporting the detention reimbursement fund, courthouse funding, the detention and fire recruitment funding and EMS services for the radios. They are, it's nice to see that they're gonna be supporting IPRA improvements. We sent Sheriff Cage, Ms. Adrian had typed up something along with the Sheriff's Office. They collaborated with them and we sent along all of our information for IPRA improvements. We'd love to see some of those. For the assessors, we have equitable disclosure. And then there's under the commissioners to address border-related crime. So it's good to see those priorities come in. And then under individual affiliates, they're gonna be endorsed and supported by the board, but they're not technically the priorities of them. Assessors have some increased head of family exemption deadline. The clerks' marriage license fees increase proposed updates. The clerk and assessors welcome to talk about those more. Commissioned behavioral health treatment is gonna be one of their priorities. Fire and emergency managers, para return to work for GIS amendment to enhance nine-on-one act. For health services, work with OSI on updates to healthcare consolidation and the treasures changes to installment agreements for delinquent property taxes. So, just wanted to share those with you guys for legislative priorities. With that, we'll move into elected official department comments and announcements.
Good morning again, I'll get, I'll start out, I've got a little list here. But I definitely am, am happy to see Mayor Fuentes here from the Village of Loving. We've, we've made some huge strides in, in our relationship and, and doing things to mutually benefit the Village of Loving and the, and the county. One of those things is, we just had, recently had a joint DWI checkpoint in the village and we worked with Chief Byrd and his, his officer and we had deputies out there. Now, one thing I do want to point out about checkpoints that I believe in, I'm, I don't believe in hindering and, I guess, affecting our citizens to a real great extent. I don't want to hold people up too long, I don't believe in that, I don't think that's our job. So, the way I, we direct our checkpoints is, we will only check to see if someone is intoxicated or impaired. That's all we're doing. The deputies aren't asking for papers and everything else, they're moving people through, hey, okay, you're, you're good, let's go on. That's the, that's the requirement. Obviously, it's legal to ask for a driver's license and the rest of, I don't believe in that. I think we need to just keep people moving. So that's how we conduct our checkpoints and Chief Byrd agrees with me on that. We're also looking at, well, we're going to, we're moving forward with, it's, it's, I've always believed that, I mean, I, I really did like supporting SROs in, in the, in the municipalities, however, Carlsbad, the, the, the school system for Carlsbad has hired several security guard-type SRO-type people. Carlsbad Police Department has a very robust SRO program, as does Artesia PD. Loving is, has a, has always, I felt like Loving is always something that we've needed to take a look at because they don't have as many resources as Carlsbad and Artesia. So we're gonna be supporting the SRO program down there. I, I think that's more in line with the Sheriff's Office mission and I feel like that's gonna be a, a very mutually beneficial endeavor for us and for the village. So, we're looking at that, and we're doing that. We've looked at it, we're gonna look at how to do it and, and in a more efficient way. Really doing, happy about, excited about the, the shooting range in North Eddy County. We're working towards getting that done, that has been a big, that, that's a big community project also because we've been able to incorporate the civilian component, which is what soon-to-be Senator Townsend and Peyton Yates have both asked me about and said, hey, is there any way that the, that civilians could utilize your new range? I'm not real comfortable with that, so we've added a component of a range that is specifically for civilians. And I think that will, and, and everybody's very excited about it. So we're gonna have a, a, a new range for the Sheriff's Office specifically, it will be all by itself and that will be for us only, and I think it's gonna be a great thing, and, anyway. NMC and, and meetings, yeah, as, as Roberta talked about, IPRA is a huge issue and we all know it is. The Attorney's affiliate, CAS, they, you've got a heck of a representative, I can't think of his name offhand, but he made a great presentation and it was so nice having the, the backup from, from what you provided and what Lieutenant Wyatt provided me to go in there. And, and we, we were all looking for the same things, the same changes that we want to see made. We think the legislature is open to it, we're hoping to make some, some, some progress on this. We had several anecdotal issues that, it's, it's just a nightmare. I mean, right now, if I, if, if your home gets burglarized, Commissioner, and my deputies come in and take a report, they're walking around your home with their cameras on and they're seeing everything that you have in your home. And guess what? That, that can be requested immediately by the public. People can case your house without, without you even being able to stop it. So we want to be able to redact things like that. Right now, it's very touching whether we can or not. We're trying to protect the citizens and that's what we're doing. So there's a huge laundry list of requests that we have. I think they're all gonna, if we can get any of them, it's gonna be beneficial. Look how much money we're paying as a county right now just to comply with these insane shotgun blast IPRA requests. It's just killing us, and it's killing everybody else too. I mean, I don't know how the, the, I, I don't know how y'all can handle it. It, it, it's, I don't know how places, especially places like Roosevelt County maybe, Portales, where they don't have a budget. So how are they gonna hire people to do this? I don't know. And they're gonna get, and, and all they're doing is being set up for failure and for being fined and sued. So we're working on that. Para return to work, we, we made it very clear, we made some, some serious concessions with the legislature when we got it passed this last time. We said, we're not, we're not gonna come back to the well and we're not gonna come and try and ask for more and more and more. This that we're trying to get done is more of a clarification, not coming back for more positions, it's not, it's for fire. If they, I think, what was it?
Josh, $64,000 was the cap, I think, that they made?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's $64,000 for the cap for paying someone return to work as a, as a firefighter, EMT. What, what about places that need to hire administrators? What about folks that, you know, just, I mean, here, that, that's not gonna cut it, that's not gonna pay for a fireman. So, we're looking at changing that and getting that reevaluated. Right now, and I found this out, Josh, is that we can't, we can't ask for a waiver on that. But, you know how a waiver is. So, that's what we're looking at doing with that. Our dogs, our, our, our dog program, our canine program is moving along wonderfully. I really appreciate Jimmy Fusen, a, a local citizen. He purchased a personal protection dog from the same company that, that we work with, that we purchased our dogs from and trained with. And he paid to have his dogs some advanced training, the folks that come up here and he graciously allowed our dogs to help participate in that training and get some extra training for free. So, and it, it's very important to keep that training up with the dogs. So I wanted to, to thank Jimmy for that. Operation Hard Target is charging along. Lieutenant Wyatt is actually out right now teaching a class for CHEMM, that is C-E-H-M-M, the, the local nonprofit organization. He's doing a presentation on active shooter and how to better protect themselves. So, we're moving along with that. Work at the Sheriff's Office, we've been, that place was designed without my input back in the day and we've been making changes over time, getting it to where I think it's where we want it and where it needs to be. We tore out some walls so we could set up our three-screen simulator and we're putting, we just had some mats put down in there, some like gym-type flooring so that we can do defensive tactics in there as well. The covered parking, thank you for that, thank you, that's gonna make a big difference out there. Also, I've been working with Jason Burns on something we wanted to do a long time ago. It's, it's cumbersome to get our deputies in and out at the, to have the road barn do the, the oil changes all the time. It's, it's kind of a pain for them and it's kind of a pain for my deputies. So what we've done is, we're gonna put a mechanic, eventually, if this is kind of part-time right now, but it's gonna be full-time out at the Sheriff's Office. We have a, a lift, we have everything out there set up for working on vehicles. So it's gonna, we're gonna have in-house oil changes and minor stuff that can be done out there. So that's gonna be a big, that's gonna be a cost savings too, a huge cost savings. So I, I'm really happy about that. Crashes are up, we're at, we're, we're seeing them again and I'm telling you what, my, my traffic team, those, those folks are out there busting their humps. And had them out at Duarte Road just a little while back, but they just move around. They're mostly south of town, that's where our major activity is. And we're having, we're seeing some more fatalities and we just, we're handling it. They're all certified crash reconstructionists, they all are very competent in what they're doing. Unfortunately, they get a lot of practice. So, I, I'm, I'm just hoping that, we're trying to make an impact, but we've got a lot of roads in Eddy County and they're, it's hard to cover them all. So, we're moving towards state accreditation. There's only one Sheriff's Office in the state that holds state accreditation. We're moving towards that. Chief Hutchinson, soon-to-be Sheriff Hutchinson, is, I, I, we got him appointed to the accreditation advisory board and we're moving forward with it. We hope to be an accredited Sheriff's Office agency in, hopefully within the next year. That's gonna make an, an impact as far as, it's gonna decrease, we'll, we'll get a break on our insurance with New Mexico Counties. So, that, that's a help, but plus it just helps us become a better agency. And then, Picks Valley Drug Task Force, we've got great people out there, but unfortunately, great people get promoted. Not, well, fortunately, I guess, but unfortunately, it's a double-edged sword. Good people get promoted. We had Jorge Martinez, one of our agents out there, he just promoted to sergeant. So, we have an opening out there now. McCarty from Carlsbad Police Department, he promoted to sergeant, he'll be moving out of the, the task force too. So Chief Skinner and I have been talking, we're, we have a plan, we're, we want to get the right folks out there and get them working. Additionally, as you know, Commander Leos is retiring, so we have two, and we only, we just did internal applicants because we had some good folks that we didn't feel like we needed to go outside for. We have two applicants, one is Sergeant Ortega of the Sheriff's Office and the other is Agent, soon-to-be Sergeant McCarty from CPD. So we'll see how that goes. If Ortega promotes, I'm gonna have to have, I may have another position I need to fill out there, so. We're, we're working on it, we're, we're, we're getting there. Two other things, I know I'm being long-winded, but I had a lot to, to put out. The elected official pay initiative, the ballot initiative that we have, that we've pushed and I've worked personally very hard for, to get in. I'm, I'm hoping that everybody understands, as New Mexico Counties, we couldn't support that. I mean, we, we can't push for it at New Mexico County because it is a political issue. But individuals can't, individual elected officials, managers, we can all push for that. Other elected officials, we can, we can all make our voices known. And since 2018, there has not been a raise for county elected officials in the state of New Mexico since 2018, which is ridiculous, that what some folks are working for. But one, here, here's a great example. The chief police of Albuquerque Police Department makes close to $250,000 a year. The sheriff, the Burnaleo County Sheriff's Office, who is a great sheriff, he makes $98,000. Whereas, there's no equity there. So we really need, I feel like we need to push for this, we need to talk to folks, we need to make sure they understand what they're voting for. People get confused and it, it failed a while back because they said, oh, the commissioners are just trying to pad their pockets. They wanna, they wanna give themselves raises. That's not what this is about. This is about professionals like Kara, like me, that are not being paid a fair wage. Now, do I get the benefit of it? No, I've, I've worked for eight years at $78,000 a year, which is crazy, but that's what I do, I guess I am crazy. But, I think that, that we would want to pay Matt more than that. do, I guess I am crazy, but, I think that, that we would wanna pay Matt more than that, um, and I think that Kara, you know, people, anybody, any elected official should be making a fair wage, a comparable wage to their civilian counterparts. So, I'm hoping that y'all can, can help with that, that we can get the message out, and that we can make sure that the voters are educated. Um, finally, uh, I'll end, unfortunately, on a, on a down note. Uh, I, I don't know if everybody's seen it, but a, a, a very good friend of mine, Wayne Ashley, Corporal at Carl Bed Police Department, passed away several days ago. Um, I've known Wayne for over thirty years, he was a, uh, he was working at Portales when I was, got out of the Navy, and I was a dispatcher and a, and a rookie cop. Wayne busted his hump every day out there on that Harley, and, uh, right, keeping, keeping the, the traffic down and, and, and doing a great job, and, uh, man, he put in a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of work to this community, so I just wanted to recognize Wayne, uh, his services, we, we had a, a, some services for him already, but the formal one is gonna be on the seventeenth, is when they're gonna lay him to rest. So, anyway, uh, keep his family in your thoughts and in your prayers. Wayne was a, he was a, a great public servant, so, anyway, any questions for me?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you were talking earlier about the oil changes, how you're, you're, they're held up over at the barn, and, and so you're looking at alternatives. Have we looked at a, at a third-party service agreement as an alternative, where, uh, we could maybe contract with somebody to get them in and out as our, uh, you know, as they roll over whatever the mileage, uh, limits are?
Right. We, originally, we went to Master Lube and those places, and we did have kind of an agreement with them, uh, that we weren't, they gave us a price break. It costs significantly less to purchase our own oil, to purchase our own filters, and to do our own work. Uh, James Moore, Captain Moore, looked into that, and we made that change a while back, uh, and we, we, 'cause we visited with Jason about it, he said, "Yeah, well, we, we can make it happen." And it does happen, it's just, this will make it where it's, it's easy, the deputies can leave their vehicle, or they can come in and wait on it. Uh, at the, the barn, at the, the county barn, they're, they're busy, they're busy, and, and so getting them scheduled is a problem with that, and it's not because they don't want to, or, 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 and they, they, it's just, they've got a high volume, so...
So, so the third-party didn't work right?
It did not work out right, basically.
Okay, that's all, that was all, that was my question.
Okay, yeah, we tried it, sir.
Yeah.
Well, good, good, all right, all right, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'll, uh, try to be brief. Um, we've been ongoing projects for about sixty days now, I wanted to come just give a progress and, um, tell you some of the strides we've made towards really a lot of what we got going on, so I'm gonna hand it out, uh, project overview, what we kinda got going on this morning. Um, I also handed out some schedules that we're circulating, if we need to go over schedules, we can. Um, I'm gonna hit highlights, and if you guys have any questions, please kinda hit me through this, 'cause we got a lot going on, so. Um, our Corral's intersection on sixty-two and eighty is going, they paved the, the super that we fixed over there yesterday, they're supposed to be finalizing and paving that one this week, and we'll get that back open, with the lights put in here within the next week or so, and get that back open. Um, we've talked several times about Commerce and how we're gonna try to retain access to that, so we're, we're finalizing that one and completing that one quickly. Our Currycomb Buckeye Project, our county crews are still out there hauling a significant amount of field, we're looking at doing a third-party contractor to go out there and do the chip seal and fog seal on that one, um, so that they can move on to their other projects that they have on further down the list, so that we can get them all done this year. Um, that's gonna be a significant project, that's nineteen miles across the county from Illinois Camp all the way to the Blue Street or the Potash Mine Road, so that's gonna be a thorough fair that's used very much, and what that's helping us do is every time we, what we're finding with our roads is when we don't go chip seal, within six months, they get blown out with all the traffic on them, so we can't keep up with them, blading and watering and all the materials, so that's why. It's honestly more cost-efficient for us to go chip seal, and it holds the roads, and we've been very efficient at it, we're still very efficient at our chip seal. Uh, same thing with Longhorn, we're gonna end up chip sealing and microsealing Longhorn, um, with the amount of traffic that's down there, that one's gonna be another one that we're gonna haul all the material, they're starting to move on that one this week, so they are moving through that along with the Longhorn Bridge, we're gonna try to widen that one just a little bit, you can see rebar through the deck, we're gonna try to repair and, uh, reinforce that bridge without getting into the river or the water, so...
On Longhorn, let's make sure that we get a notice out.
Yes.
And see if we can't put notices in Loving at gas stations to truckers that'll be there as well, if that road's gonna be shut down, let's try to get that as, out to the public as much as possible ahead of it, instead of reacting to it.
Oh, yes, sir, we, we've, Savannah and, uh, County Manager, we've tried to put out some notices, we're gonna take some message boards out there, and we're gonna try to do everything we can to provide some alternate routes and get them around, and we know that it's gonna be a congested mess anyway, but we're gonna do the best we can to, and that's gonna be another part of getting in and out of there as quick as we can, um, 'cause the longer we're in there, the more it just congests and makes it a deal, and it's... The problem we run into south of the county is not necessarily construction, it's river crossings, there's only two river crossings, South Eleven, one of them's Longhorn, one of them's McDonald. Um, so the longer that we have that, not necessarily shut down, but congested, it's, yes, we're gonna try to get in and out there, and we will, uh, get the notice out to our partners that we know are down there. They're gonna be moving on that this week. Um, Angel Flats, Burton Flats and, uh, Buckskin, those are all gonna be our fall and spring projects, but again, those are kinda centralized around the Currycomb area. Our Cross교 realignment, we're finalizing some right away on that, and we're hopefully gonna start construction on that, um, with DOT, which they're anticipating here by the end of the month, beginning of September, so. Um, Cell Six Construction, we talked about that earlier, that one's moving right along, we're hoping to be done with that by October, and we'll move into that one with our plan at the landfill. The Loving Transfer Station upgrade, we've looked at that, we've got a design and layout we've looked at, um, Mayor Fuentes kinda gave you an update on that this morning, we're gonna try to help them with some of their haul in Loving, uh, coming to the landfill. At the end of the day, the more folks and trucks we can take out of the landfill, the better process we're gonna have, so that's why we're really trying to help and make those processes efficient. Um, our twenty-six, two-eighty-five, and our thirteen, two-eighty-five, we're working on those, we've got a good plan in place, we've talked to DOT, we're still on board with that, we're just trying to get around and, and get them, not necessarily appeased, but get them some review and proof, if they request it, so that we can proceed on those. Um, we have had several conversations, we had another bad wreck there here last week, so we're, we're really working on getting those going. So, um, Happy Valley Park, uh, we're moving on that one, we've got grass planted, we've got trees planted, we're kinda just waiting on grass to grow. Um, we're finalizing some concrete and paving the parking lots, um, as we requested at the last meeting, we're evaluating the, you know, the flashpad of Otis Jim versus Happy Valley, um, and we're seeing how it'll work, we're kinda concerned about water restrictions that just went into place, and some of those deals, we're evaluating that, and we'll bring some recommendations for that. Um, the Shooting Range Bathroom, that one is underway, we've awarded that one, they approved the shop drawings here this week, and we're hoping that they're gonna be out there and moving around here within the week, building, building, getting that one set up, and they're really excited about that project coming. Uh, Yamalika Park Equipment, we have some plans coming on that, and we're gonna, uh, get a plan we like on that and move that one forward. Uh, your fire stations at McNew and Tumbleweed, we've got, uh, local architects on board, we've done some plan reviews with, uh, Josh and his team, um, we've got a plan that they like, and things can work for them for both Tumbleweed and McNew, and we are proceeding with construction drawings on both of those. We hope to be in construction on McNew in September-ish and Tumbleweed in October-ish, so we've got a plan on how we're gonna procure those with the architects, and, um, we're gonna have both those going on at the same time. Uh, the Loving Apparatus Bay is moving, they're gonna be out there, they've got all the concrete poured, and they're supposed to be starting to stand up the building this week and have that one done here in the next couple of months. Um, the Drug Task Force Building Sheriff mentioned that one, we have folks on site in demo framing, um, that one's moving along good, we have a schedule, they're looking at being done, hopefully by the end of the year, have them moved in and, uh, be able to start using that facility. Uh, the Second Floor Courthouse, same kinda deal, they're done with demo, they're in their framing, it's a, the poor courthouse folks, there's, there's not a lot of insulation between the walls, and they're in there construction every day, so we're, we're trying to work with them and, and be efficient in our construction, but that one's moving along, and, um, once again, we're trying to have that one done by the end of the year, they're moving really efficient on that, got us a schedule, they're really sticking to it, once we've kinda got them on contract, got them going. Um, the Sheriff's Shooting Range, he mentioned that one, so we're, we're working on that, we've almost got the public one done, and we're about to move over to the sheriff's one, we got a good plan on that one, we're gonna start moving some dirt and get them in there, and they're all real excited about that. The complex with, uh, awarding the architect this morning, we've already scheduled kind of a kickoff meeting with them, they're really looking forward to getting down here and getting started. Um, what our plan is on that is it's a modified design-build type process, we wanna get them down, get a design based off what we've already kinda presented, um, make sure that we're okay with it, maybe get Billy to look at it one more time, and make sure that we've included everything we need in the facility for the foreseeable future, um, and kick them down on design and get them going, so that we can hopefully start construction and break ground by the first of the year, is the plan. I know that's aggressive, but that's what we're kinda wanting to see. The Admin Building, we awarded that at the previous commission meeting, um, we've already had the initial kickoff with the architect, they're trying to put together their rendition of the admin building, so that we can start reviewing that with County Manager and staff, make sure that we incorporate everybody on that, um, get all the things and aspects of that building that we can, uh, again, have another facility that we can use for the foreseeable forever. Um, so, we're, we're kinda same timeline, we're gonna get them, kick them off on design and be breaking ground on that hopefully soon. Um, Facilities and OEM Building, we've, we've got an initial plan on that, we've looked at it with, uh, OEM, and we're, we're, got some different options that we're trying to review with them, and once again, just trying to get the floor plans laid out, so we can go to construction drawings and start construction, do some procurement on those, but we do have, uh, Architect on board looking at basic plans on that. Uh, the Civil part of it, we have the topo done, they're working on the utilities aspect of that, and what we're gonna end up doing on, uh, the construction is I have my guys, the county crews are really wanting to be the initial ones out on that site, so we're gonna send them out there with our dozer, and we're gonna clear that site probably here starting at the mid, end of September, and go ahead and clear and scrub that site, do some demos, there's still some concrete and several things out there, so we can start with a clean slate and start doing all the things we wanna move around and be able to do out there. Um, the digital, uh, the digital and the courthouse report that we've kinda talked about, we've got all of our vendors on board, those were awarded, um, we're moving forward efficiently on that. We're, uh, reviewing the questions and interviews that we're gonna get to him for the economic part, the architects are looking at several plans and options that we've wanted to present, and we're on schedule, we'll be able to present that here, um, hopefully in October, so it's moving around. Um, I'd really like to thank Finance Department and County Manager on the procurements, I know we put these on a expedited schedule, and they really worked hard and came through on us with both of them going at the same time, so we're, we're happy that they supported this and we're able to, so we can get these things in place and keep them moving, so. Lots of things moving in lots of directions. We're, we're here in the next four months, we're gonna have several things under construction, several projects that are moving in the right direction, so. Questions? I don't know a lot.
I got a question, uh, I'm, not a question, I just wanna tell you, thank you for the, uh, project schedules, uh, I love those, I think we ought to have every project, no matter what, we should have those type of schedules and stuff, and so I just wanna thank you for getting those to us, so that we can see. It makes it real easy to see the milestones and how it's progressing, so thank you.
We're really working on keeping them on track, and once you get here, just get here, order your stuff, and stay on it till you're done, so don't show up and start and then leave for a month. We're gonna be working on tracking costs, we've had, uh, several conversations with County Manager, um, on how we're gonna track costs for the complex, this is, we're gonna be spending a lot of money here real soon.
Can you give me a digital copy, so I don't have to have, uh, this, this roadmap to carry around?
So, I, yes, I can, and we were gonna look at this a little bit, this is kinda how we're tracking our schedules, um, with several of these projects, and we can get you some access to this with how we're gonna update schedules and really kinda track our costs with how things are progressing, and that's what we print off your net GAN charts, I know those are kinda hard to look at, but it's gonna really show you how much we have, um, going all at once as we get through these things, and like I said, next four months, I mean, we have several things moving all at the same time, so...
And, and, and I'm kinda like Commissioner Bowen, I'd like a digital copy, it's a lot easier to follow on a computer.
Yes, sir, we'll, we'll try to be efficient, quit burning so many trees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, so, I just have a couple updates for you guys on what I've been working on in the last, not since, or, last couple weeks since I was last introduced. I did pass you around a newsletter, kinda piggybacking off of what Jason said, um, really wanna reach the people who don't have social media, that's our main goal, you know, I know it's easy to post a lot of things on Facebook, but this is what's going out to the community, I did send an email internally as well, so we can look to see these every quarter, um, just to keep the community involved. Um, Chairman, I know you mentioned the Longhorn, I did post that last Friday, um, thank you for explaining that, I will get that out to Loving as well, and then even look into advertising, like a boost on Facebook, share it in 411 pages. Um, I did go to training last week, Monday through Wednesday, with Lieutenant, Lieutenant Dugas and Jennifer Armandores, that was really awesome, it was media training, and then, um, just some exciting things coming with all the projects, we will be getting a lot of content on that, posting it out to the community, so they're seeing what we're doing. Um, I will also be doing a monthly video update, so everything that's in the quarterly newsletter will also be posted on Facebook every month, along with some fun content of what's going on in the community, and, um, just a Facebook update, when I first started, we had five point three, we're at five point six, so we're growing and we're getting a lot of information out there, and, um, thank you for approving the Kaylinde Grant, I think that's gonna be awesome for our community, showing our involvement, working with Mary Garworth, and, um, yeah, do you guys have any questions for me?
No, I've seen everything that you've put on Facebook, and I appreciate it.
I love it, good start.
Great, thank you, guys.
That's what I was gonna say, your first video, you crushed it.
Yeah, thank you.
I think that's the way I, we've talked about it a lot, we're doing it in, in Artesia's side as well.
Yeah, you're...
The more information we push out there, there's a lot of that information in the world, and the more we have from us saying what's happening, absolutely brilliant, so great job.
Yeah, Artesia's, Artesia's doing great, too, so, um, looking to do some content with you guys as well, maybe like meet the commissioners and, you know, just to get us all out there more, um, in our community, I'm gonna start attending some more meetings, that much in the Crossbed Coalition, for like the nonprofits, just to see what they're up to, um, and just also, I pass these out at that meeting as well, so they know we're present and, you know, they have our support and vice versa, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Not, not a huge issue, uh, the jail's gonna be transitioning from its current inmate jail management system, which, uh, on our webpage, as well as the county webpage, is access to the public to be able to see what individuals, their charges, release dates, and those, uh, parameters. Uh, we're gonna be shut off from September the third to hopefully the twenty-third, so roughly three weeks or so, those that have dual access and law enforcement will be, uh, be limited at that time, too, but I'll get an email out to the team, just wanna let you guys know we're, we're ready.
Thank you for working.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just have two quick updates, so, the testing is all done with the radio system, uh, which was a verification of coverage, so we just got that report last night, haven't been able to review it fully yet, um, we have been doing our own tests with handheld radios, and we have a lot more coverage than we had previously, which is a good thing, so, we are scheduled to go live on September twenty-third, so in the next couple of weeks, we'll be getting all the radios reprogrammed, so that we have the seven hundred access. Um, and we've been working out any other little hiccups that have come up, so, um, that project should be coming to a close. Um, and we've been working out any other little hiccups that have come up, so, um, that project should be coming to a close, um, minus the teardown, which will take about six months to a year of the old system because we've got some transitional period. Um, as far as the fairgrounds goes, Jared met with, uh, the contractor during the Friday of the fair, so whenever there was the most people there, so we could see the flow and how we'd get trucks in for fire department connections and all that. And it was all agreed upon and those plans have been signed and returned back to them, so they should be good to move forward. Any other questions?
You're still exploring my project?
Yes, sir. We're doing some more research and I've got the team working on it, so. Once we get more, we'll bring an update on that, so.
Appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Um, just a couple of quick updates. One of them is a little behind, but we've been, uh, facilities has been doing some upgrades at, um, the fairgrounds. We did, uh, we painted the entire indoor arena and the corrals. Uh, we put in fifty-five new lights, painted the bleachers, did a lot of repairs to the concession stands. Um, the restrooms, uh, needed some attention. Uh, got all the, uh, septic systems working correctly, found some issues there, got everything up to speed. We're working on, uh, uh, getting some pricing for, uh, the middle section of bleachers and some lighting upgrades there. Uh, we did electrical panel upgrade, um, replaced all the wood on the north bleachers and some things like that. So, we're gonna, we're also gonna put some paint down, uh, there in the outdoor arena. Uh, for the community center, um, on the interior, we just finished, uh, the roof frat before the fair. We're gonna do some, uh, floor polishing and lighting replacement inside and really make it look nice. Um, other than that, we're just, uh, doing our normal maintenance of facilities and bringing everything along. And at this point, that's all I have, is stand free questions.
Uh, you can, can you do us some, some of those schedules, uh, project schedules, digital project schedules, uh, with milestones on them? Kinda like what Jason's doing on the, I'm not talking about the, the little stuff like, but the larger stuff, uh, it'd be nice to have that too.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Chairman. Uh-huh. Thank you.
Anyone else? Moving into County Manager's comments, I only have one item. I passed out some information to you guys on the Muleshoe Refugee Expansion. Um, I just wanted to provide you some information. Next commission meeting, I will probably be bringing forward either a resolution or a letter of support. What this is, it kinda goes off the thirty-by-thirty, uh, initiative that the Biden administration, uh, set in place, where they plan to have thirty percent of lands and water by twenty-thirty. Um, this is another initiative, um, in Muleshoe, Texas, refugee, which had like, I believe, around seven thousand acres. They wanted to expand it by millions. Um, it will affect fifteen counties in Texas, I believe, and five counties in New Mexico. Um, Eddie County technically will not be affected by it. It's not one of the counties, but our neighboring counties will, Chavez and Lee County. Um, Chavez County has already passed a resolution, um, against this Muleshoe refugee expansion. Um, and they are asking us as Eddie County to, um, either write a letter of support against it or pass a resolution. So, just provided you guys some information on that. That's all I have. Turn it over to Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Beard, you wanna start us off?
Okay, uh, back to the fairgrounds, the work that Trent and everybody have done out there. And the, you know, Dylan Pinson was one that was really pushing that, the county part of it, which is basically the horse count. They've done a lot of, a lot of good stuff up there. That is a well-used facility that really needed work done and, uh, I went up with the dirt and did a tour here a while back and the next thing I knew, the work was done. So, kudos to you guys for getting that done expeditiously. Uh, my other thing, this is a bone of contention, is the illegal dumping. Uh, everybody knows my opinion on that. I hate, you know, I was born and raised in this county. I've hunted, fished, been everywhere. And the river, the roads are just a sea of garbage. Uh, and it's, I, I don't know how you fix it, but I think it's gonna take more than education. I need some people need to be caught and pay a price on it. This is a beautiful county with some beautiful spots and it's open, it's BLM. There's not a whole lot of locked up land. I mean, people can go out and enjoy the great desert and parts of the river. And everywhere you go, it's just awful. It really is. And how we catch them, I don't know, but we need to catch them, so. With that sour note, long. Start a new job.
Something more pleasant, please, Joe.
I don't know if it's more pleasant, but, uh, I do, I'm really excited to see us, I would like to see a resolution quickly on this Muleshoe Refuge. It's the thirty-by-thirty. Um, I think that's, for those that don't know the thirty-by-thirty, you need to go research it. It's absolutely tragic what they're trying to get accomplished, in my opinion. It's thirty percent of the lands by twenty-thirty. That doesn't sound like a lot, but if you put the amount of land that they're wanting to confiscate, uh, it's basically two Texases. Is that the way you say it? Texas is?
Texai.
Cause there's only one Texas if you ask a Texan. But, uh, it'll, it's the size of two of them and that's, that's quite a bit of land if you look at the, the landmass of the United States, uh, that they're wanting to take back. And the way they're wording it is, 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 uh, I don't wanna say dangerous. I just, it's, it's gonna really limit the use of those lands for, for what we really need to get accomplished out there. Um, I actually spoke on this a couple of, about a month ago. Uh, there was another gentleman there just talking on it that was showing how much land it takes to actually feed the population. Um, if they get this accomplished, we're not gonna have the land to feed the population. So, I find it interesting, how are we gonna get that accomplished? What's their big plan there as well? So, glad to see we're gonna do something with that. I think Lewis Derrick is brilliant on, on all of those types of deals. So, uh, any kind of questions we have, I would hope you, uh, if he can't answer, there's not an answer, so. He knows everything there is to know about it, so.
He does.
We need to use that resource and we need to do everything we can to continue to protect our citizens, um, their grazing rights and so much that, that goes into the state of New Mexico that's so important to, to our everyday life. Um, lots of other things. Uh, the fair did an absolutely fantastic job. I was out there a number of times. Um, really appreciated it this year. It's great to see the carnival back. Uh, they actually made me do a video of riding carnival rides. Um, it was interesting, uh, great rides, so, uh, I guess there's a lot I wasn't gonna get on. Um, so, they picked the kitty rides for me.
Yeah.
I didn't even see you.
The spinning, I don't, I don't spin and I don't do circles and things like that, so.
That would've been rough.
If I did, it's one and done for the day, but, uh, no, fair did a good job. Always glad to see the, the support from our community, uh, to those kids and, and what they get accomplished out there. Of course, school's starting soon, um, so be on the lookout for all of that. Um, and then as, as was said earlier, uh, there's a lot of parents fixing to drop their kids off at college. Um, we're one of them and, uh, I think building up to that is absolutely miserable, um, sad and everything else. So, please be sympathetic to those parents who are dropping their, their little one off, who is, are no longer little, but, uh, at those colleges, uh, for the first time and then having to drive away. So, um, lots of changes happening for a lot of families, uh, all, every year, so. Uh, not only are we dropping off at college, you've got all the moms and dads dropping off at kindergarten. So, you've got two ends of the spectrum, um, both are tough, uh, so, uh, watch out for those kids as they're out there.
Joe, hurry.
Uh, I agree with what Mr. Henry said about, uh, taking land. I'm so tired of, of government taking land, seizing land and taking it away from the public. And I'm also tired of seeing where, uh, on certain, uh, commissions and stuff that we're making appointed commissions and instead of elected. So, they're taking away our, our power to vote on those things and so, uh, those things are really scary and irritating to me. And so, I hate to see that. I'm glad to see that we had such great participation in our fair this year and we had, uh, so many visitors and stuff. But I think that's really a great thing and a great, uh, honor for the guys that served on the fair board and worked so hard to put it on, so. That's just.
Um, first, I'd like to thank Mayor Fuentes for showing up, being here and, uh, giving us an update and about the Village of Loving. The county fair is always something to be proud of and one point two-three million dollars raised in the cell this year, that's, that's unreal. You, you go around the state, it just doesn't happen. It's something to truly be proud of. We have a lot of good people supporting a lot of great kids in our county and I think that's something we should all be very proud of. Back to school this week, more kids on the road. Everybody be aware of people trying to figure out bus lines and different new traffic issues, so just keep your eyes open. Um, as everybody else has said, thirty-by-thirty initiative, especially this one here close to us in Muleshoe, it's something that should appall all of us and I'm absolutely in support of getting a resolution or a letter of support out tomorrow. And, um, lastly, I'd just like to thank Savannah once again, uh, for what she's doing. I think that information beats ignorance and the more information that we can get out with what we are doing, the reasons behind what we are doing and putting that out to the public and it coming straight from the horse's mouth and not being misconstrued by social media or media, um, I think that's a very good thing and something that we've been lacking for a long time. So, I appreciate what you're doing and hope to keep it up. And that's all I got, guys, so. Have a good day, everybody.